Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll go ahead and start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Yes, bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we ask for you to empower us to recognize the way in which we are blessed and continue to grant us a spirit of service. Let us pray for the earthquake victims in Mexico. May the Lord heal those injured and comfort those who have lost loved ones. We also ask to bring peace to the Villarreal family as we mourn the loss of our employee, Ruben Villarreal. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation. Ms. Carrillo? National Animal Safety and Prevention Month.
Yes, Mayor Counsel. Good afternoon. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas October is National Animal Safety and Prevention Month, a month dedicated to promoting the safe practices of handling and caring for both domestic and wild animals. Whereas there are several ways to participate in National Animal Safety and Prevention Month, some of them are as simple as being aware of the needs of your own household pets. Make sure they are microchipped. Collars with identification tags are also just as important. Whereas if you don't have pets of your own, you can still participate in Animal Safety and Prevention Month by fostering a pet until it finds its new forever home, or by donating money or much-needed supplies to your local animal shelters. This will help to ensure that pets waiting to be rehomed will get all the necessary care. Whereas the City of Mission would like to invite the entire community to support our Mission Possible program, which encourages responsible and compassionate treatment of all animals. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim October 2017 as National Animal Safety and Prevention Month in Mission, Texas, and call upon all residents to join us for the kickoff of National Animal Safety and Prevention Month on Saturday, September 30, 2017, at the Mission Historical Museum Courtyard at 6:00 PM for an adoption clinic and at sunset, the movie presentation of Susie's Hope, proclaimed on this the 25th day of September, 2017.
We need a motion to approve the...
No movement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve our proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we continue, I would like to recognize and acknowledge some of the members of a committee that we have here with us today. This is a committee that was actually formed by just the interest of animals and pets and having the interest from the citizens to come together and form a committee to establish in the near future an animal adoption shelter, which is really a... in addition to what the city is already doing on animal adoption with our Mission Possible in our website. We do have Mr. Homer Garza, who's present with us here today, Homer. If you can all step up. I'm going to ask the committee to step up and be recognized. Mr. Homer Garza is a business owner. He owns Movie Night on North Conway. We also have Ms. Rosie Olivares. Ms. Olivares is a teacher here at Mission School District. We also have Ms. Ivan Perez. Ms. Perez is also a teacher educator here for the Mission School District. And we also do have Ms. Tina Lewis. Ms. Lewis is a Mission resident, also with six years of experience with animal shelters. And with this group, Ms. Lewis, if you can come up here. Actually, this group has been very instrumental in moving forward the project that we have here in the City of Mission to bring an adoption center to the city so we can have a great experience for our kids and our residents to come and adopt our pets. So I'm going to ask that the committee receive the proclamation on behalf of the Mayor and the City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor.
How are you doing?
Good to see you.
You want to stand right here?
I think I want to come over.
Everybody look over here at me. And in three, two, one, smile. All right, perfect. Look over here.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
The progress of Mission and its small progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated. Good afternoon. My name is Rosario Olivares. I'm a resident of Mission and an animal advocate, a voice for the voiceless. I was asked to say a few words to you about the efforts that are being made in regards to the welfare of our Mission shelter dogs. I am very happy to say that the City of Mission is taking great strides to bring awareness to its community about the importance of taking care of their pets. With the new improvement of the website, Mission Possible, Mission residents are able to look for their lost dogs and/or adopt one. Community events such as the showing of Susie's Hope will educate and help foster compassion in the treatment of their animals by allowing rescuers and transports to come in and pull out dogs who would have been euthanized and providing them a loving home, and with the establishment of an adoption center for the residents to come out and adopt their forever friend. Kudos to the City of Mission, and together we can continue to help save the lives of many dogs in our shelters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time, it's a presentation from the Cámara de Comercio...
Cámara de Comercio Internacional.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Marillo Grande. I'm presenting to the Cámara de Comercio Internacional. I'm the president. I'm going to give my thanks to the City of Mission, as well as to all the citizens of the same. It's been a very gratifying event. We've had a successful event in Mango Park on the 15th of September with total success. And we're going to thank them in a very humble way, with a recognition for some of our members. I'd like to give it to all of them, but I don't want to let anyone down. On behalf of the International Chamber of Commerce, Cámara de Comercio Internacional, we would like to offer a certificate of appreciation to the City of Mission, to the City of Mission Fire Department, City of Mission Police Department, and the City of Mission Parks and Recreation for your assistance in the planning and execution of the Grito de Independencia celebration held on September 15 at Banwood Park. Really appreciate everything that you guys did for us, and we look forward to doing one next year at the new convention center on September 15. We've already set the date aside, and we're very glad that the event was a success. We didn't have any incidents, and we look forward to working with you guys on the next one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the International Chamber of Commerce, Cámara de Comercio Internacional, we would like to give a certificate of appreciation to the City of Mission, to the City of Mission Fire Department, City of Mission Police Department, and the City of Mission Parks and Recreation for your assistance in the planning and execution of the Grito de Independencia celebration held on September 15 at Banwood Park. Really appreciate everything that you guys did for us, and we look forward to doing one next year at the new convention center on September 15. We've already set the date aside, and we're very glad that the event was a success. We didn't have any incidents, and we look forward to working with you guys on the next one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
First of all, we sure...
Sure.
We do have our police chief, Robert Dominguez, our fire chief, Gilbert Sanchez, and our parks director, Mr. Brad Benson. If you can see us over here by the podium, thank you.
Can you take a picture back here on the podium?
Everybody just take a step to the right.
This way.
Let's go this way.
This is to the right.
Let's go that way.
This way.
Everybody look over here. And in three, two, one, smile. And we move. Hold it for one second. We do one more. Three, two, one. Perfect.
At least there's the parks right here and the police department.
Where's the chief?
Chief.
Thank you so much. Very good.
Mayor, I would like to say that the event was very well attended, very family-oriented. We had a lot of people from the surrounding community that came to visit, so I want to congratulate you. Great job. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cardosa, for helping a lot too, and everybody from the city.
Thank you all very much. Next time, we have a presentation from Martin Garza on some presentations that we are going to give, certificates of some of our employees.
Mayor Counsel, good afternoon. This is a presentation regarding an achievement that our finance department received this week. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the City of Mission by Government Finance Officers Association, not only of the United States, but of Canada, for its comprehensive annual financial report. Now, this certificate is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. The achievement has been awarded to individuals or a department designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning financial report. It gives me great pleasure at this moment to introduce and recognize our finance director, Anchivela, and her finance department, who for the past 16 years in a row, the City of Mission through their accomplishments have received this award. So, big round of applause for our finance department. They're a little shy.
There you go. We're going to take a quick picture with the council.
Thank you.
They're a little shy, Mayor. They're used to dealing with numbers every day behind four walls and closed doors, so... but they're very happy to receive the announcement.
David, how you doing?
Good. David, fine, thank you.
Perfect. Everybody look over here. And three, two, one. Perfect. We got it.
Now, we have a report from the International Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. In terms of recent events, I'll begin with our Buenas tardes luncheon that occurred on September 14, 2017. We had approximately 250 people in attendance at Simron Country Club. Next, on Wednesday, September 20, at the Mission Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with the Texas Department of Transportation, we hosted our first historically underutilized business, also known as Hub Workshop, and we had 22 business owners attend the workshop. In terms of upcoming events, we will be kicking off our Thinking Outside the Box Small Business Workshop Series this Wednesday on September 27 at the Mission Chamber of Commerce, beginning at 9:00 AM. The series will run from September 27 to December 6 with classes occurring approximately every two weeks. The classes will occur at the Chamber of Commerce and at the C building. Following that, on October 4, also at the Mission Chamber of Commerce, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we're going to partner up with Texas Workforce Solutions. This will be a lunch and learn event on a statewide campaign to raise awareness about the benefits of hiring people with disabilities. Lastly, the Chamber will have their annual banquet on October 9 from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Amario's Banquet and Conference Center. I also brought personal invitations for each City Council member, mayor, and city manager. Thank you. Thank you.
Next time, it's the department reports. You have them in your pocket. If you all have any questions, don't hesitate to ask now.
I want to make a motion to approve the department reports as presented in writing, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the reports. As presented, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The asked motion carries. In terms of participation, do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to our public hearings, and we'll go on for item 1.1A. Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for a rezoning of the north, five acres of the south, 10 acres of the west, 20.49 acres of Lot 29-1, west addition to Shoreland subdivision, from AOI Agriculture Open Interim to R2 Duplex-Foreplex Residential. The applicant is Aaron Baye, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 13, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located 300 feet north of West Tumal Road along the east side of Inspiration. The surrounding zones include R1 to the north, which is actually Hollis Rutledge Park. To the east, we do have a residential community, Stone Ridge. To the west, we have Duplex-Foreplex, and to the south, we have Neighborhood Commercial. There is a history of apartments being between 2 Mile and 3 Mile, both on the west and on the east side, so this is not something... or this is something that we've seen in the area before. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning request. Staff and our city manager are also recommending approval. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we'll go ahead and ask that we go ahead and accept the recommendation.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
And approve ordinance 4554. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The asked motion carries. Item B?
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a rezoning of Lot 10, Block 8, South Bryan Ridge Number 2 subdivision, from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Office Building. Octavio Echagaray is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 13, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located near the northwest corner of Bryan Road and Reynosa. The surrounding zones include R1 to the north, C1 to the east, and R1 to the west and south. In the past, we... just two blocks south, we've seen where a dentist office recently did the same thing, where they rezoned the lot in the back to Neighborhood Commercial. The chiropractor office here at the corner of Reynosa and Bryan desires to do the same thing. They're going to demolish the house that... or they plan on demolishing the house that's directly behind them and add or expand the facility. It will be... they are proposing an attached building to the facility. There was no opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning request. Staff and city manager are also recommending approval. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor against this request? It seems that you're going to... are you all going to do away with the front building or what? I don't understand it.
No, they're going to expand...
Huh?
They're going to expand that building to the back. It's a chiropractor office, and their plans are to expand it so that they can have their therapy services in the back.
And they're going to do it with the house?
They're going to do it with the house, yes, sir.
And expand parking, maybe?
They own the parking lot on the south side, but they are going to be in compliance with the parking requirements.
Is it a single unit or a combined unit or...
It will be a combined unit.
Combined unit?
Yes. There are several different plans. Some are showing parking through the alleys, some are showing parking off Reynosa. We're going to meet with them and come up with the best solution for the site.
Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we'll ask that we go ahead and approve the recommendation and ordinance 4555.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we'll go ahead and approve. The request is read by Mr. Acevedo, and also with the conditions that they cannot start anything in the front until they tear the house down.
Correct.
Así que vamos a platicar.
Yes.
Notas argas. Okay, motion carries. Item C?
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for repo service, office use in a property zoned AOI at 2500 North Morfield Road, a 10-acre tract excluding a 1.14 acre out of Lot A, BL Miller subdivision. The property is zoned AOI, and the applicant is Roel Buenteo. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 13, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located a quarter mile north of Griffin Parkway on the east side of Morfield. The applicant constructed a 90-by-80 fenced-in impound area for the repossession vehicles, and access is through Morfield. And he has been in operation at this site since 2009, so he's been there for eight years now. One of the concerns that the Planning and Zoning Commission originally had was the storage of vehicles on the outside corridor. But as you can see in these pictures, Mr. Buenteo has already cleaned up his act, and he removed all the vehicles that were on the outside, and they will all be fenced in behind the cedar fence from now on. There was one concern from a neighboring church to the west, and her concern were the vehicles, but Mr. Buenteo has addressed that, and the applicant or the person that complained is now happy. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and our city manager are also recommending approval. Item 1.1C is now before you. We're recommending approval for three years.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we'll go ahead and ask that we go ahead and approve this request.
I move for approval as presented.
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to also include the adoption of ordinance 4556. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The asked motion carries. Item D?
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Pizza Hut. The address is 2217 East Griffin Parkway, being Lot 1, RGV Pizza subdivision. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is Muy Pizza Stejas LLC, doing business as Pizza Hut 33917. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 13, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located along the north side of the east Griffin Parkway between Citrus and Glasscock Road. The existing pizza shop has been in operation at this location since 2002. However, the previous owner has changed names, and the new name will be Muy Pizza Stejas LLC. Everything's going to remain the same. It's still going to be Pizza Hut. They're just changing ownership. The hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, and Friday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. There's a total of 29 employees manning this operation, parking and landscaping are meeting code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting, and the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and city manager are recommending approval of the CUP for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit, and we're also recommending that they acquire a new business license under the new name. Item 1.1D is now before you.
It is a wet zone, right?
It's already wet zoned, yes.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we ask that we go ahead and accept the recommendation. Also approve ordinance 4557.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and approve the request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The asked motion carries. Item E?
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Pizza Hut, 311 Interstate Highway 2, Lot 6C, El Pueblo subdivision, Phase 1. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is Muy Pizza Stejas LLC, doing business as Pizza Hut 33904. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 13, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located along the north side of US Expressway between Mayberry and Conway. Like the previous item, this pizzeria has been in existence since 1989, a little bit longer, and it's under new ownership, and the new ownership must obtain a TABC license under their name. Thus, the need for a conditional use permit under their own name. The hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and Friday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. A total of 19 employees will man this operation, and the current restaurant does meet the parking and landscaping requirements. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit. Staff and city manager are recommending approval of the CUP for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit, and that the new business operator acquire a new business license. Item 1.1E is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we'll ask that we go ahead and approve the request.
Want to approve? Second, Mayor.
And also include the ordinance 4558. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The asked motion carries. Thank you all very much, and we'll go ahead and go into the disposition of minutes. And City Council meeting on September 11 of 2017, we do need a motion to approve those minutes.
Want to approve, Mayor?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The asked motion carries. Item... we go into the acknowledgement of some minutes that we had for our board members that serve our community. We have the Citizens Advisory Committee that have... they had a meeting on August 8 of 2017. We do have Parks and Recreation Board had a meeting on July 13 of 2017. We do have Planning and Zoning Commission on August 23 of 2017. The Mission Historical Museum on August 21 of 2017. And we also had the Spear Memorial Library, who got together on August 15 of 2017. We do need a motion to acknowledge all those minutes that we had from our boards.
I want to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve those... or to acknowledge the minutes on this board meetings that we had for our community. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The asked motion carries. And we now go to Ms. Carrillo for item 4.1. of alcoholic beverages at Pizza Hut, 311 Interstate Highway 2, Lot 6C, El Pueblo subdivision, Phase 1. The property is owned C3 and the applicant is Muy Pizza Stejas LLC, doing business as Pizza Hut 33904. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 13, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located along the north side of US Expressway between Mayberry and Conway. Like the previous item, this pizzeria has been in existence since 1989, a little bit longer, and it's under new ownership and the new ownership must obtain a TABC license under their name. Thus the need for a conditional use permit under their own name. The hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM and Friday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. A total of 19 employees will man this operation and the current restaurant does meet the parking and landscaping requirements. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit. Staff and city manager are recommending approval of the CUP for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit and that the new business operator acquire a new business license. Item 1.1E is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, we'll ask that we go ahead and approve, approve the request.
Want to approve? Second, Mayor.
And also include ordinance 4558. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you all very much. And we'll go ahead and go into the disposition of minutes and city council meeting on September the 11th of 2017. We do need a motion to approve those minutes.
Want to approve, Mayor?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item, we go into the acknowledgement of some minutes that we had for our board members that serve our community. We have the Citizens Advisory Committee that have, they had a, a meeting on August 8th of 2017. We did have Parks and Recreation Board had a meeting on July the 13th of 2017. We do have Planning and Zoning Commission on August the 23rd of 2017. The Mission Historical Museum on August the 21st of 2017. And we also had the Spear Memorial Library who got together on August the 15th of 2017. We do need a motion to acknowledge all those minutes that we had from our boards.
I want to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve those, or to acknowledge the minutes on this board meetings that we had for our community. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. And we now go to Ms. Carrillo for item 4.1.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 would be approval of Resolution 1524, expressing the city's nomination for the appraisal district board of directors for 2018-2019. This is a request from the appraisal district and Mayor Salinas is recommending the nomination of Mr. Amador Riquenes for council consideration.
As you know, we've had problems with the appraisal district and I have no buts about it, but they have not been doing a good job and they've been appraising our homes almost every year. I don't agree with them. They say that they're not doing it every year and I do have proofs. They do have them every year. I've talked to Amador, who is our representative, and he's been fighting and asking questions as far as why are we doing it every year? He's been getting the answer from Mr. Garcia that they're not, that they're doing it every two or three years. One of the most important things that we need to have on the appraisal district is they don't know, they don't, we don't want them appraising our homes every year because if they do it every year, that means they're gonna get, you're gonna get a higher value on your home and they're gonna be increasing the taxes without increasing the levy that they are supposed to use. It's like the county, in the past 10 years, they've gotten so much revenue and their tax rate is still 59 cents. But instead, in the last 10 years, they've gotten about $132 million more dollars. So where did their money come from? It's because the appraisal district is being, is being increasing the values on the homes. I don't know what's gonna happen or how they're gonna be able to, to satisfy us, but Mr. Amador has promised me that he will continue and he will do whatever he can and as much as he can to stop the every year appraisals on our properties. I have several properties that they've been, they've been appraising every year for the last four or five years. So that means that every year they get a little higher and higher and higher. That's why the value of the county has gotten up. That's why our city values has gotten up and we get extra monies. But Amador has promised me that he will continue fighting for, for our community and he will continue doing what he can to, to acknowledge what we're gonna do. So that's why I'm going to recommend that he stays on the board because he knows he isn't an answer to that board, he's been there so long. And I don't think it's the right thing to do to change him right now. He's one of our most conservative business people in our community, so he's gonna do what's best for the community of Mission and of course this area of La Jolla, Sullivan City and actually Puente. So that would be my recommendation. Now, if you do not think that we should, don't hesitate and ask, can tell me that you all are not happy with him.
Mayor, I'd like to put it into formal motion to accept Amador Riquenes as our representative based on Resolution 1524, sir.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve Mr. Amador Riquenes and approve Resolution 1524 to another two-year term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. You gotta understand that we are only nominating him.
Yes, sir.
And he will get our votes, but then he's got to go through all the other school districts and cities.
Yes, sir. We will be getting a letter probably within the next three weeks how many votes the City of Mission has, and then I will bring another resolution before the council to go ahead and, you know, for the, exactly the amount of votes that you all wanna give to Mr. Riquenes.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 4, 4.2.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This would be approval of Resolution 1525, appointing city representative and alternate to serve on the board of directors for Amigos del Valle for their 2017-2018 fiscal year. This appointment would be from October 1st, 2017 through September 30th of 2018. The current board representative is Mayor Pro Tem Nori Gonzalez-Garza. The alternate is deputy city manager Aida Lerma, and of course Mayor Salinas serves as member meritis. Mayor Salinas is recommending the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem Garza and Aida Lerma.
Okay, those are the recommendations that I have. I know that Nori has had some, some important meetings in the Amigos del Valle and we do have a little bit of problems in the Amigos del Valle board simply because when you have some people like Edinburgh, they moved our office from Mission to Edinburgh and they were getting free rent here and they're getting billed $9,000 a month for rent over there. Something is, is kinda be wrong. And it's the Edinburgh politics. And hopefully Nori is on top of it and Aida, so hopefully we can take it to another city and if not Mission, where we can get some, some free rent for the Amigos del Valle board. And I'm saying this because I want the media to get a hold of it and I want them to know that Amigos del Valle spend $9,000 a month of rent when they should not be getting built at all. They moved it over there and I don't know why they're doing it and, well, they had the votes. But now I think that it's coming back and hopefully we can move it to an area where they will not pay any rent. Right, Aida? Okay, you were the one that told me to say this. So I need a motion to go ahead and approve the Aida and Mrs. Garza.
Want to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1525 and to reappoint Mayor Pro Tem Mrs. Garza and Aida Lerma. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 4.3, Aida Lerma.
Mayor and Council, 4.3 is the approval of Resolution 1526, declaring the adoption of the municipality of Almolonga, Department of Quez al Tenango of the Republic of Guatemala. We received a letter on behalf of the Honorable Mayor Pedro Gonzalo Ziquina Yac. He is requesting to become a sister city with the City of Mission and the official ceremony will take place on October 20th in the City of Almolonga in the Republic of Guatemala. Staff and city manager are requesting, recommending approval for this item.
Do need a motion to approve Resolution 1526.
Move for approval, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. So that means the trip is on the 20th.
Correct.
Item 4.4, Mayor, is the authorization to award contract for pre-employment screening services. Pre-employment screenings include drug screening, medical, physical, and preplacement for potential new hires. We received five bid responses. The estimated cost is $11,000. We are recommending to award to industrial and family medicine, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second to approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council, 4.5 is the approval of professional service agreements with Heartless Religion and Associates.
Oh, here we go, Alice. You're on the agenda today.
The agreements, Mayor and City Council, are for the City of Mission and the Mission Police Department. Grant monies awarded for 2016-2017 were $2,779,129. Total submitted that are pending award is $5,114,381. The term of the agreements are from October 1st of 2017 through September the 30th of 2018 in the amount of $2,500 per month for each of the agreements. Staff and the city manager recommend approval.
These are the agreements between the City of Mission?
And the Mission.
The grant money that you gotten, that Hollis, you were very instrumental in getting these rents. How much money are we talking about?
On those, Mayor, is the amount of the awards? Are you talking about the amount of the awards, sir, or the contract?
The awards.
The awards are $2,779,129 and they're still pending, that are being reviewed, a total of $5,114,381,000.
You looking at $7 million?
Yes. A little bit, almost.
Eight million dollars.
Almost $8 million dollars.
Want to approve, Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. The money, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Hollis, you did very good and we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And you keep doing that.
It's real great to hear that.
Well, I was very happy to hear that you were doing a good job. And it came from Chief Dominguez here, so.
He's doing good, Mayor.
No, it's, it's good to have this money that we need some, I mean, that we have so much support. Item 4.6.
Item 4.6 is the authorization to enter into a maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies, a sole source vendor, for the maintenance on our department's electronic ticket writer, ticket writer printers and our traffic accident e-cash module. Electronic devices are utilized by a patrol officer to issue citations and complete accident reports. The total amount of the agreement for this coming year is $12,908.54. The staff and the city manager recommend approval of this maintenance agreement.
So move, Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 4.7, Ms. Longoria.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Item 4.7 is approval of assessment of fair housing plan. The assessment of fair housing plan is required by, is required to continue to receive federal funding. The City of Mission collaborated with local entitlements and public housing authorities within the Hidal County region. The goals and strategies and actions to be taken are designed to overcome fair housing issues. The comment period ended September 19th. Citizens Advisory Committee held a public hearing on September the 12th. The five-year plan is due to HUD on October the 4th, 2017. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need a motion subject to the staff and city managers.
Want to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 4.8.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. 4.8, authorization to purchase tires from Michelin TechSmart bike contract, 1523B02, Via Tire Centers for Sanitation Department. Tires are replaced approximately every three months. The fiscal year 1617, a total of 301 tires were purchased. Estimated cost is $120,000. Term of the contract is from October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need a motion.
Want to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to go ahead and approve the estimated cost. Is it $120,000?
Yes.
Staff and city managers recommends the purchase. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
I just have a quick question, Mayor, on that one. How many miles do we get on a set of tires?
It's, we, we run 110, 10 miles per day, so we multiply, it's like 9,000, almost 10,000 miles per tire.
Per month?
Every three months, I'm sorry.
Every three months?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right.
Item 4.9.
Item 4.9, authorization to seek repair service as an unneeded basis with Ohio of Texas via buyboard contract 515-16. Repairs include service rates and parts for site loaders and brush trucks. Estimated cost is $40,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need a motion to go ahead and.
So move, Mayor. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 4.10, authorization to seek maintenance as an, as needed basis, unneeded basis with brush truck centers of Texas LP via buyboard contract 521-16. Maintenance services provided include motor, transmission, and chassis components. Regular maintenance includes services, rates, and parts for the site loaders and brush trucks. Estimated cost is $80,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
Want to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 4.1, I'm sorry. Item 4.11.
4.11.
4.11?
4.11, approval of new maintenance rates, new sanitation rates to be charged to the City of Mission by ALAT Waste Services. Allowed to increase rates based on the Consumer Price Index, the CPI increased by, by an adjusted by 2%. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do we need a motion to approve the new sanitation rates? Approved by the staff and city manager?
Want to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 4.12, authorization to execute fourth-year renewal service disposal agreement with ALAT Waste. This is the fourth-year renewal for the seventh-year contract. Estimated cost $890,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation and approved by staff and city manager.
Want to approve?
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 4.13, Mr. Valmaris.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I bring before you item 4.13, authorization to solicit bids for the construction of La Placita Park Mobility Improvement Project. City Mission is a recipient of FTA funds through the LRGVDC. City match is 20%, which is $149,350 of the $746,759. The federal grant portion is 597,409. Solicitation is for the construction to include labor, materials, and equipment for the project. Staff and city manager recommend approval to solicit for bids.
We do need a motion to approve the authorization to solicit for bids.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 4.14. Ms. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Come before you, seeking authorization to solicit for bids for liquid aluminum sulfate for the North and South Water Treatment Plants. The contract terms will be for one year with two one-year renewal options. Staff and city manager recommend approval to solicit for bids.
We do need a motion, authorization from the approval of the staff and city manager. We do need a motion.
Want to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 4.15.
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item 4.15 is the authorization to approve first one-year renewal option for liquid ammonium sulfate for the North and South Water Treatment Plants. The contract is set to expire September 31st, 2017. This renewal will be from October through September 31st, 2018 with Brent Tech Southwest Inc. The first one-year renewal option is at 0% increase in price and the estimated cost for the North Water Treatment Plant is of $35,000 and for the South Water Treatment Plant of $15,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval for this item, first one-year renewal option with Brent Tech Southwest.
We need a motion to approve the authorization to approve the first one-year renewal option.
Want to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.14.
Item 4.16, Mayor and City Council members, the authorization to approve first one-year renewal option for liquid polymer for the North and South Water Treatment Plant. The contract is set to expire September 31st, 2017. The renewal will be through September 31st, 2018 with Ford Man Services Inc. Again, the first one-year renewal option will be at 0% increase in price. The estimated cost for the North Water Treatment Plant is of $60,000 and for the South Water Treatment Plant at $30,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Need a motion?
So move.
Want to approve? Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to authorize? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four seventeen?
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item four point seventeen is the authorization to approve first one-year renewal option for powder activated carbon for the North and South Water Treatment Plants. The contract is set to expire September thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Renewal will be through September thirty-first, two thousand eighteen with Brent Tech Southwest, Inc. The first, uh, one-year renewal option is at zero percent increase in price. The estimated cost for the North Water Treatment Plant is of twenty-five thousand dollars and for the South Water Treatment Plant is at fifteen thousand dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
We need a motion to authorize for the one-year renewal option?
Want to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four eighteen?
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item four point eighteen is the authorization to approve first one-year renewal option for chlorine gas for the North and South Water Treatment Plant. Contract is set to expire September thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. The renewal will be through September thirty-first, two thousand eighteen with DPC Industries, Inc. The first one-year renewal option is at zero percent increase in price. The estimated cost for the North Water Treatment Plant is at ninety thousand dollars and for the South Water Treatment Plant at forty thousand dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Need a motion to authorize?
So move.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item four nineteen?
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item four point nineteen is the authorization to approve first one-year renewal option for liquid and motion polymer for the wastewater treatment plant. The contract is set to expire September thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Renewal will be through September thirty-first, two thousand eighteen with Ford Bank, Inc. First renewal, uh, option is at zero percent increase in price, and the estimated cost for this chemical is of fifty-five thousand dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Want to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go ahead and authorize to approve the first one-year renewal option? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four twenty?
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item four point twenty is the authorization to approve first one-year renewal option for odor control chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant. Contract, uh, is set to expire September thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Renewal will be through September thirty-first, two thousand eighteen with Share Corporation. Uh, the estimated cost, again, the, this renewal will be at zero percent increase in price. The estimated cost, uh, for this chemical will be of thirty thousand dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Do we need a motion to authorize?
Want to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four twenty-one?
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item four point twenty-one is the authorization to approve the second one-year renewal option for sodium chloride for the North and South Water Treatment Plant. Contract, again, is set to expire September thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. The renewal will be through September thirty-first, two thousand eighteen with International Dioxide, Inc. The second one-year renewal option is at zero percent increase in price. The estimated cost for the North Water Treatment Plant is at a hundred and forty thousand dollars and for the South Water Treatment Plant at sixty thousand dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval for this chemical.
Need a motion to go ahead and authorize?
Want to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four twenty-two?
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item four point twenty-two is the authorization to solicit bids for the, for liquid copper sulfate for the North and South Water Treatment Plants. The contract terms will be for one year with two one-year renewal options. Staff and City Manager recommend approval to solicit for bids for this chemical.
Do we need a motion to authorize to solicit a bid?
So move, Mayor.
Want to approve?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Uh, four twenty-three?
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council members, item four point twenty-three is the authorization to solicit bids for the installation of a mechanical bar screen and two ten-inch influent main lift station pumps at the wastewater treatment, uh, plant. Bid entails installation of a balcony bar screen to mechanically remove wastewater inorganic materials and, and the installation of two ten-inch government rob pumps at the main, uh, wastewater treatment plant lift station. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Do we need a motion to go ahead and authorize this solicitor bid?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I want you to know that you took our whole budget.
No.
We're over.
(laughing).
I want to have Chief Dominguez on the next item, four twenty-four.
Mayor and City Council, item four point two-four is discussion and action regarding the change of recognition of the sole and exclusive bargaining agent for the Mission Police Officers. The City of Mission received a petition from the Mission Police Association to change recognition of the association designated as the sole and exclusive bargaining agent for Mission Police Officers. Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section one forty-two oh fifty-six B one, the government body of a municipality may, number one, recognize the change or modification as provided by the petition, or, number two, order a certification election in accordance with Section one forty-two point oh fifty-four regarding whether to do so. Staff and City Manager recommend to order a certification election to determine whether a police officers' association represents a majority of the covered police officers.
Go ahead and, and move that we go ahead and authorize the recommendation that you and the, and our City Manager are recommending for them to hold an election?
Yes, Mayor.
And for them to come back to us with who?
With the results.
With the results, and then we go from there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you need a motion from us?
Yes, sir.
To follow this, um...
Section one forty-two oh fifty-four.
Underly. Okay, do we need a motion?
So move, Mayor?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do we go ahead and approve the recommendation, and then we go ahead and ask the police department to have an election in selecting the majority of the union? And then come back to us, and then we go and start talking to them about whatever?
Yes, Mayor.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Four twenty-five?
Item four twenty-five is a tax collections report for the month of August, two thousand seventeen. The total tax levy was twenty million forty-five thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-two cents, and the amount of collections as of June, I'm sorry, as of August, two thousand seventeen, is nineteen million three hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents, which represents ninety-six point forty percent of the tax levy. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
We need a motion to go ahead and approve?
Want to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Four twenty-seven?
Um, four twenty-six.
Twenty-six, I'm sorry.
Um, item four twenty-six is an authorization to surplus attached list of machinery and equipment. The attached list is a collection compromised of thirteen city departments. Items will be assessed for condition and value and will be sold via online auction or disposed. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to authorize the sale?
So move, Mayor?
Or the option?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item?
Item four twenty-seven is the August, two thousand seventeen financial statements. Our beginning fund balance is thirty-nine million forty-six thousand fifty-eight dollars. Total revenues for the month were seven million seven hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars, and total expenditures were eight million seven hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars, leaving an ending fund balance of thirty-eight million thirty-six thousand and one hundred and eighty dollars. Total assets were one hundred and forty-five million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Total liabilities were sixty-four million three hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, and total net assets were eighty-one million five hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
So your actual fund balance is of, uh, is of, uh...
Thirty-eight million, thirty-six...
Wait a minute, it's a, it's of August, two thousand seventeen?
Yes.
The fund balance is thirty-eight million, thirty-six, one eighty?
Yes.
I want you all to hear that, thirty-eight million. We need a motion to approve the, actually, the fund balance?
Our move for approval is presented, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. There is a good fund balance, and I have to commend your staff, and I think you get that award every year.
Yes.
That's why I didn't say anything at the beginning, because we do it every year. So we, we're very happy, and I think we got the best, um, department in the valley, or maybe the state. So I have to congratulate you, and we feel very comfortable, uh, when we have staff like you people.
Thank you, thank you.
We don't worry about it. And then we see fund balances like this, it makes us very happy. Thank you. Four twenty-eight?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I have before you item number four point two-eight. It's the authorization to execute the second one-year renewal option via state-approved contract for cleaning and sanitary supplies for city facilities. The current contract is with Gulf Coast Paper Company via state-approved buyboard contract number four nine oh dash one five. Second one-year renewal option at a zero percent price increase. Estimated cost of this, uh, coming year's budget is fifty-three thousand dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
So move, Mayor?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Montana.
Item four point one-nine is...
We have another one over here, four twenty-nine?
Yes, sir. Uh, four point two-nine is authorization to purchase via state-approved contract for chemicals, mureatic acid feeder systems, and integrated electronic systems for the parks, recreations, swimming pools, and splash pad. Purchase via state-approved contract, buyboard contract number five three three dash one seven with aquatic commercial solutions. Estimated amount is thirty thousand dollars for Banworth Pool and Splash Pad, and fifteen thousand dollars for the Mayberry Pool. Total estimated cost is forty-five thousand dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Do we need a motion to approve the request?
So move, Mayor?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Montana?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item four thirty is a sign code variance request to install a digital face on a west-facing